I am Kevin Rigstedt, the chairman of the Goffstown Zoning Board of Adjustment. Welcome to the June meeting. I'm going to read through some introductions and then we'll proceed on with the agenda. The Goffstown Zoning Board is an elected board of five members and up to five appointed alternates. Currently, the board has five elected members and two alternates. If anyone is interested in serving on the ZBA, please see Brian Rose for more information. The board has a posted agenda for each meeting and tends to follow the items in order. The board will open the public hearing on an application to receive testimony from applicants, abutters, and affected parties and ask questions about the appeal. The public hearing will then be closed and the board will enter into a deliberative session to discuss the merits of the appeal. For each application, the board will decide to approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue to a later meeting. You are welcome to watch the deliberations this evening, or you can contact Brian Rose at Town Hall to get the results. For an applicant's request to be approved, there must be an affirmative vote of at least three members. An applicant can request a continuance if there is not a full five-member board to act on an application. If you are aggrieved by a decision made by the ZBA tonight, you have the right to appeal to the Superior Court. However, before appealing to the Superior Court, you must request a rehearing with this board to preserve your right to appeal. Rehearing requests must be filed within 30 days of the decision and state all reasons whether the decision was illegal or unreasonable. Failure to request a rehearing may forfeit your ability to appeal to Superior Court. And with that, the board and staff, please introduce themselves, starting with...
I'm Brian Rose. I'm the Planning and Zoning Administrator.
My name is Kathy Hooton. I'm the vice chairman.
Gail LeBrake.
Len Stewart, alternate.
Ed Loopy, member.
And you see in front of you, there's four elected members and we have one alternate sitting with us tonight, Len. Len, if you could be the fifth voting member for an applications this evening. I do not believe that Joanne is coming this evening, as I understand.
I got a email from her stating she was not coming.
Okay.
And that Vivian may not be here.
Okay. So Len, you will serve in that capacity. Thank you for being here for that. So ladies and gentlemen, we have quite a full agenda. We actually have six new applications in front of us to go through. So we're going to make sure we hear all inputs from the public, questions, and we'll proceed expeditiously through those. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the May 3 meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Any second or any comments? Okay. Any comments or changes? I have none. All those in favor of approving the May 3 minutes, as Gail typed them up, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain. Thank you. Abstention? Okay. So 4-0-1. Vivian, hello, how are you? All right. With the first administrative thing out of the way, we're going to open up to the first public hearing item. And it is, Reginald and Yvette Levine, applicant owners are seeking a variance to allow the construction of a deck to the existing single-family home that has an accessory apartment. The variance is required because the proposed deck will be set back approximately 22 feet from the rear property line, whereas Section 4.3 of the zoning ordinance requires a rear setback of 30 feet. The property is located at Two Plumber Street, which is MAP 17, Lot 137, in the residential two district. Is someone here to represent the applicant? Whoever is going to speak, come forward, please, and have a seat. Introduce yourself.
I'm Yvette Levine.
And the camera will catch you and you, Goffstown, will hear whoever's tuning in. And good evening, Ms. Levine. What are you planning on doing?
We'd like to build a deck approximately...
I'm going to hold you there, because I jumped a step.
Oh, okay.
First thing we need to do is to chairman.
I make a motion that there's no regional impact on this application.
Second. I cannot vote.
Yeah, right now, we have Len. Is that person?
Well, I thought we only five, but more than five.
I'll cede if you want to change.
No, 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 that's fine.
Nope, you're good, Len.
I'll second it.
Okay. Thank you, Ed. First and second that this application has no regional impact. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain. You got five. Okay. So thank you, sorry about that. All right. Please, proceed.
Okay. We're looking to build a deck in our backyard, approximately eight feet by 19. It's going to access our door right away. Right now, we have steps that go straight down. It's very, we're getting older and those steps are getting dangerous for us to get into our backyard. We'd like to have the deck as a landing and then steps down to our backyard.
Okay. So you're seeking a variance?
Right. Because we're lacking eight feet.
Do they have any questions?
Just wanted to ask, Brian, is this bringing this up to code, or is it already in code, or for them to have a landing?
Well, they can do it either way, I believe, but I think it is safer to have a landing. I'm not sure what the building code says for that.
As I understand it, could you describe your existing situation? You used to have a doorway and like three or four steps going down.
Exactly. Right from the door, you open the door and you're down one step right away. There's no landing.
And just goes straight down. And then, the way you're proposing to do the deck, you'd have one step down onto the deck and then a couple of more steps off the edge of the deck down to the yard.
Right. Exactly.
And from the drawing, it looks like, if I do the math properly, your house is essentially the backside of the house is on the setback right there. I mean, you've...
From our house to the fence would be 30 feet.
30 feet, so...
But with the deck, it would be eight feet, so we lack...
So you can't build anything without getting a variance, essentially.
Mm-hmm. Correct.
Is there a driveway behind your house?
Not behind, in the front of the house is the driveway. We have a carport.
Okay, okay, in the front. When I went by, in your backyard, is that the neighbor's driveway that's right behind your property?
Yes, yes.
That's what I was, okay.
Yeah, it's the neighbor's.
For clarification, too, the drawing shows two decks on there. There's one deck that meets any and all of the requirements, so that one's not up for discussion tonight. I just wanted to clarify, they are going to do one underneath the carport and then also they're asking for the one in the back.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions in this application?
I went to see the property also, and I do agree that when you do open the door, I mean, you have to step right down or, you know, you should have a landing, you should have something to be able to walk and then go down the stairs. I think it only makes sense. That's it.
Does, so when we look at the criteria for a variance, there's five questions. And they talk to, you know, that it wouldn't be contrary to the public interest by doing so, that you still observe the spirit of the ordinance, granting the variance would do substantial justice, that it wouldn't diminish the values of the surrounding properties, and that if we were to literally enforce the provisions of the ordinance, you would have a hardship. If we were to deny you this application, what would happen? What would you...
I mean, it would be hard on both of us. I, you know, we need the landing for both of us. I have very bad knees, we're getting older. We need to be able to do something to help ourselves out here. Otherwise, there'll be accidents happening there. That shouldn't happen. That's our reason of trying to get this, but if we don't get the variance, then we have no choice.
And you need to replace what you have? Is that what you're saying?
No, we're adding a deck because we have just those stairs. We have nothing, you know, so I'm doing the same under the carport to give us a little landing. It's nothing big, but enough for us to not just step boom right down.
Okay.
Give us a chance to get our balance and...
Aide you to get to the ground, and in this case, in the back.
Right. I mean, that's the one I'm looking for. Unfortunately.
And you've lived there since 1969?
Yes. Yes.
All right. Any last questions, Ms. Levine? All right. Thank you for your coming forward and speaking to us tonight. Is anyone here to speak on behalf of the application? I'm going to open up to any abutters who are speaking either for or against this application. Any interested parties? Anyone? Okay. I think I'm going to close the public hearing on that application. And I'm closing the public hearing. We would like to debate and deliberate this now.
Make a motion to approve.
I second.
Okay. Any comments or discussion? All right, I don't have any. So... I asked him my question.
Can we do this on replay?
Mr. Loopy made a motion to approve. Ms. Hooton seconded that motion.
I certainly did, yeah.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstained? None, so time's zero-oh. There you go. That's it. Thank you.
Nice presentation.
Thank you very much.
To stay and listen to more?
All right. The next application that we have in front of us this evening is Dennis Lucinda Lemay. Applicants owners are seeking variances from Section 4.3 of the zoning ordinance to allow the construction of a proposed 18-foot by 18-foot living space addition and attach 24-foot by 25-foot garage to the existing single-family home that has an accessory apartment. The variances are required because the proposed addition and garage would extend two feet into the 25-foot side setback and 12 feet into the 25-foot front setback. And with the proposed addition and garage, the building coverage on the lot would be at 27 percent, whereas the allowed maximum coverage is 25 percent. The property is located at 100 Violet Street, which is MAP 13, Lot 2, in the residential two district. And before we hear from the applicants, Brian has suggested that this application does not have regional impact. Any motion?
Motion that it has no regional impact.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor that this application does not have regional impact, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Time's zero-oh.
Mr. Chair? Yes. If I may, I just would like to make a couple of corrections. These were noticed by the applicant. He called me up and we just, we put the notification out, but this information wasn't necessarily needed to be in the notification, so it's not like we have to do any re-notification for these errors. But basically, the two errors are that the proposed living space addition is supposed to be 18 by 20 feet, not 18 by 18. And the proposed garage is supposed to be 26 by 26. Those dimensions had changed sort of in his preliminary design. He had given us those dimensions. And then in a secondary submittal that he gave to me...
Okay.
That had changed a little bit. So I just wanted to make that clarification.
Okay. Any from the board, any issues on that?
So it went 18 to 20 from 18 by 18?
Yep.
And it went 26 to 26 from what?
From 24 by 25.
So what went on in the public notice was that the previous note, what's provided us in our packets looks to be correct.
It's correct in your report, yes.
The smaller sizes, I guess.
So I did notice that when I went through it. I have no issue with that. I guess we'll find out if anyone else does.
And I don't know if this is correct in saying, but if anyone had an issue with it, I guess they could appeal the decision.
Absolutely. Okay. Any other staff comments, Brian?
That's all I have.
Let's see. Okay. Sir, your name?
It's Dennis Lemay.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. And I'm seeking for a variance to put the addition on for, because right now, we're living in our bedroom, I mean, our living room. That's where our bedroom is. So we want to get some privacy back, so that's what the addition is for. And the garage is, I'd like to have a place to bring my van in, especially in the wintertime, and be able to put the ramp down and have my wife's car in there, too, be able to get in and out, you know, out of the weather is basically what it is. I have my, a snow blower, a riding snow thrower that I used to have leave outside and have to have somebody shovel it off and clean it off for me before I can get on it. This way, I can leave it right in the garage and open the door and I'm going, so...
Okay. So you're seeking, looks to be at least one variance. How many is it, Brian?
There's one for the front setback. One for the...
Side?
Side setback and then one for the coverage.
Okay. So essentially, three different aspects, okay.
Which is a corner lot, so that's why, you know, actually, both of them are frontage.
I have a couple of questions about the character of your house. In the description we have here, it says that the living space is a single-family home that has an accessory apartment.
Correct.
And I have a diagram here that I think came in our packet. Which part of this diagram is the accessory apartment?
It is the part that's 20, 22 by 40 with the deck. And the 22 by 16 garage is part of the accessory apartment.
The 22 by 16 garage, is that their garage?
That's, yes, it's my mother's.
Okay. And the 22 by 40?
Is the accessory dwelling. There is a porch with it, too. Actually, apartment is only 650 square feet, accessory dwelling.
Yeah. And the 21 by 25, is that the kitchen?
No, that's, that's the original house.
Oh, that's the original house.
Six kids and two adults grew up in that little house. My mother's owned the house for 44 years, I think. I bought it from her last year.
So she, if I'm looking at it this way, then she, your mother lives on the right-hand side and you're looking to live on the left-hand side? I look at this.
Picture the house there, right there.
Yeah. It was hard for me to tell when I went by.
This is the in-law apartment, well, accessory dwelling, and that's her garage. And this is the 25 by 25 house, or 25 by 20 more.
Are you guys clear? Did you understand where that is?
Can I ask a question, please? I am wondering, Dennis, why you are not, if you're adding a 20, 18 by 20, living quarters, why aren't you going down to where the rest of the house finishes?
Because the way this is all set up, it kind of has to work that way. Like, this is what the side of the house looks like, where I'm going to come up with the addition. So it's going to come up about the middle of this window. And that's my living room. And this is the bathroom here, so I have to access the new construction through here. There's really no other way I could have designed it.
So you couldn't bring it up to be equalized with your home?
No.
And again, then I'll ask...
I can't move it back. Like I say, I'm having, I got to access the house through here, and it's only going to be like three and a half feet wide there, so...
And again, I'll ask you another question, why you didn't put your proposed living space equal with your garage?
Cost.
Oh, okay.
Another seven feet would have been quite a bit more, you know. I would have liked to have a bigger bedroom.
I'm just saying, you're taking 18 by 20, and it seems like it would be, you know, more feasible to have a bigger space, but no.
Yeah, I'd love to, but like I say, it's the cost of it, you know.
Okay.
Do you share the kitchen, is that...
No.
No.
No. She has her own, it's her own apartment. She has her own living space, there's a door, get in and out. I built it in 2003, I believe. I did the accessory dwelling.
Any other questions?
I have a question for, well, let me ask you, Mr. Lemay, first. You're adding a garage on the one side, which obviously, you're adding a driveway as well, correct?
Correct.
Is there any limitations, Brian, on any issues that we, now we add another driveway on the other street, so how many driveways will this house have?
It'll have two driveways.
Okay.
But like I say, it's on a corner lot, and one of them's going to be on one street, and the other one's going to be around the corner.
So from the aerial, it looks like there's a driveway. Is there a parking area or something, too, that's being used?
Right. There's a parking area right...
That's different from your driveway?
Right. That's different from in front of the garage. We park where, just about where the 18 by 20 addition's going. That driveway's going to have to disappear.
Okay. So that parking area is going to go away?
Yeah, it's going to be all landscaped and...
And so now, when we go back to two driveways, Brian, we seem... I'm looking that up. Okay. And then you've got to consider it's an in-law as well, so...
Is it my assumption that the reason this isn't considered a two-family application because the accessory part of it is 650 feet and therefore, it's a, it's a main residence with an accessory? Is that why we're not looking at this as a two-family applica, a duplex?
Isn't 650 the cutoff?
It is.
Yeah.
Is that because of the 650?
Right. You can't add it to the accessory dwelling unit, or else it becomes a regular dwelling unit.
And it becomes a duplex, right, I would think?
I kind of wish I would have got it for a two-family when I built it, because, you know, 650 square feet was, you know, not too small, but, you know, if I could have got it as a two-family, I could have gone bigger. And I kind of wish I did at the time. They do charge us one and a half times for the sewage.
Yes, they do.
Did you have to come before the zoning board to add the in-law apartment?
Yes.
What year approximately was that?
About 2003.
Okay. Now, obviously, we said yes.
Yes.
Well, Brian's looking that up. Anybody else have any other questions?
What is the infringement?
What are the three variances that they're seeking?
Three variances, one, it's...
It's a rear setback, a side setback, and a lot coverage.
Lot coverage.
The figures for the lot coverage and the setbacks were all figured on the new dimensions, not on the old ones. That's why that didn't change any, you know. The setback doesn't change because I went bigger. We had figured that out already. Yes, I went in, I applied for a building application with that size, the 18 by 18 and the 25 by 24. And then, you know, they told me I had to get a variant, so I figured if I'm going to get it, I might as well make sure this is big enough for me, you know?
Yeah.
So that's why I changed the sizes, but...
Okay. And let me correct myself. It's a side, front, and coverage, not the rear.
Any last questions? Okay. Mr. Lemay, thank you. Anyone here to speak on behalf of the applicant? Any abutters would like to speak on behalf or against this application? Any interested parties that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay. Before I close the public hearing, I'll wait for Brian.
Okay. Regulation is one driveway is permitted per lot for the first 100 feet of lot frontage. One additional driveway is permitted per lot for each additional 150 feet of lot frontage after the first 100 feet of lot frontage. Where compliance cannot be achieved with these standards, the planning board may grant a conditional use permit pursuant to Section 7.5, alternate parking arrangements. And that's in Section 7.4.2, separation of driveways in residential districts.
Yes, out of the plan.
So that would be a planning board action if they are not able to meet that requirement?
Do we know?
On this drawing, he says he has 100 feet on one street and 130 feet of frontage on the other, so he misses it by 20 feet.
Sounds like that wouldn't meet it, yeah.
Because he's allowed 100 feet on the first? Either misses it by 20 or 50.
I want to say the one with...
So he misses it.
The one with 130 feet is already got a driveway.
Right, okay.
The one with 100 feet doesn't have a driveway.
So he needs 150 there.
Yeah, you just need 20 additional feet of frontage, which he doesn't have, so you would have to go to the planning board.
So if we're to approve this variance...
Conditional use permit.
He would have to go to the planning board, and that would be you and the staff would...
Did I misunderstand something? I thought you said the first driveway was 100 feet.
That's correct.
And the second driveway would be 130 feet.
After the first 100 feet of lot frontage.
It doesn't prioritize which one comes first, as far as the calculations?
No, I think it's just total lot, total frontage.
That's what I'm understanding, too.
But he's got two frontage.
He's got two frontages.
The planning board can figure it out. He's got one on one street and one on another street. He's got Violet Street and then this other street, I don't know what it is.
It's Violet Street, it just turns.
Violet, it turns.
It's, oh, okay.
So it's frontage on the same street.
Okay.
Oh, so he does have 230 feet of frontage, yeah.
It's all the same frontage.
He needs an extra.
So...
Needs an extra 20 feet.
Which is planning board.
Yep.
The reason I had put it as a separate driveway is because I was told when I did the accessory dwelling, that it's supposed to have her own parking. So that's why, you know, and plus, it's in front of the garage, so it doesn't do any good for us.
So let's think about this, how does it impact our application? Does it impact our application on this?
I don't think it does. I don't think it does.
Any issues? Okay. Any last comments or questions? All right. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing and open up for comments, deliberation, and motions. Oh, it's still Len.
Okay.
So before he goes to the planning board, or after he goes to the planning board, which is it, that he has to go for the driveway permit?
It seems that he, it seems that he would have to go to the planning board, like, once we approve this variance, these variances.
Okay, be the planning board first.
Yeah, he definitely has to get a conditional approval for the driveway.
And I think the staff will help review that and help him determine if that's what he needs to do. I'm not an expert on that.
So we don't have the authority to grant him a variance because he doesn't have the frontage?
No, we do. We have the authority to grant all the variances that are required, but to actually build what he needs to build as approved, he, it appears that he would have to go to the planning board to get that approval for that second driveway.
Because it's stated specifically in the zoning ordinance that the planning board would grant the conditional use permit in that case, then that would be the requirement, so...
Okay. If the planning board did not conditionally approve the driveway, then he has to possibly rethink his application.
Right.
Because he's obviously looking to put a garage with a driveway, so he has to, he has to pass that hurdle also in order for this to be totally approved, if we go forward and approve it.
Because we do look at the design and how they're doing it, but, you know, he could change the configuration base to try and get the planning board approval. We're primarily focusing on that we're approving the front yard setback, side yard setback and coverage.
So we're primarily doing the...
We're not approving driveways, we're approving the...
Right. The footprint.
I do have a question that I would like to have answered. On your...
We did close the public hearing.
Oh, just...
So ask the question, maybe we'll have the answer.
What I would have liked to have known was where the dimensions changed on my drawing, the footage.
Right here. Got the 20, he's got the correct dimensions here in the drawing.
Right, it's 26 by 26, and 26 by 28, which 20...
No, no, it's 26 by...
18 by 20 is the other one.
Yeah, and 26 by 26 for the garage. And he's got it... And he's got the eighteen by twenty.
Oh, okay.
Those two darkened in areas.
And those are the actual, those are the correct dimensions, right?
Yes.
Okay.
We didn't, we didn't put the old drawings in, 'cause we didn't wanna confuse you.
Our packets were correct.
Apparently, we confused you anyway.
Yeah.
It was just a public notice was different. Okay, so we have, the public hearing is closed, we have the five people, and one of those five is Len, for any discussion, motions, those two things. I'll make a statement that, through the, I didn't say it in the public hearing portion, but he talked through the five variance criteria and actually answered them in accordance with how I think, talking and speaking to the public interest, spirit of the ordinance, substantial justice, value of surrounding properties, and hardship. So he spoke to, as he spoke to, the privacy, ability to not have to live in his living room, talking about how to access to the garage, that it doesn't devalue surrounding properties, there is substantial justice, spirit of the ordinance is reserved, and not contrary, contrary to public interest. So I'm gonna make a motion to approve this application, which approves all three variance criterias. One second. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving his...
Wouldn't you add that he has to go to the planning board, wouldn't that wouldn't be in the...
I'm not gonna add that as a condition.
I didn't know, okay.
I'm gonna let the, him work with the, with the staff on that. So all those in favor of approving the variances, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose or abstain, five zero zero. There you go.
Thank you.
Okay. So, Len, I'm gonna take you off the hook for the next two.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I need to take a short break and go help Mr. Lemay back out.
Okay. We'll take, yes, we will do that. We'll just take a couple minutes here. All right, thank you for letting us take that short break there. So we're gonna move on to the third application for the evening, and it reads, Heidi Lang, applicant owner, is seeking a special exception and variance to develop an existing single-family home into a two-family home on a non-conforming lot. A special exception to develop the non-conforming lot is authorized by Section fourteen point seven point three of the zoning ordinance. The lot is non-conforming because it has one hundred feet of frontage, whereas Section four point three requires two hundred feet of frontage for a single-family home, and because the lot is only point four six acres in size, whereas Section four point three requires a minimum of two acres. A variance is required to allow a two-family home to be constructed on this lot because Section three point eleven point eight point two footnote permits two-family dwellings in the agricultural district where the property has three acres and three hundred feet of frontage, or otherwise meets Section four point three, whereas the property does not meet either of these conditions. The lot is located at three New Road, which is map twenty-six, lot seven A, in the agricultural district. The property is owned by Kirk and Heidi Lang. And if someone here to represent the application, please come forward.
Hi, he's gonna speak for me, okay?
And who, please, sir, have a seat, then.
My name is Alvin Minor.
Did you read that?
No.
Can you repeat your name and spell the last?
Alvin Minor, A-L-B-A-N-M-I-N-E-R.
All right, sir, and you are, I'm, how do you know the owner in this case?
I'm, I live with her.
Okay. All right, I didn't know if you're a builder...
On the end of this, the property is owned by Kirk. Mr. Lang is deceased, he passed away three years ago.
I didn't mean to infringe, I was just, I was, it was like a builder or somebody.
No, but I, I want to, I just... That's gonna come to play here.
Okay.
And, and this whole scheme of what we're doing.
All right, thank you.
But, yeah, so I live there.
How many, before you go on, I get jumping the gun here, I need to do regional impact.
I'd like to make a motion that this has no regional impact.
Second.
And Brian recommended that it doesn't have any regional impact, any discussion? All those in favor to say that it does not have regional impact, and I'm gonna have...
Pardon me, spoke out of turn.
I was gonna have the next two applications, Vivian be the voting member on. So, so we have the first for no regional impact from Kathy.
I'll second.
Gail seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No or abstain. Sir, sorry for that, please.
No problem. I've never been in front of a zoning board, so I'm not sure what I need to do here.
Yeah, that's fine. You just need to describe, what are you trying to do with this piece of property and why?
Um, I'm looking to add a fourteen by twenty-two and a half foot addition onto the back, which doesn't abut, change any of the, like, side abutments, or it just goes on the rear one, which doesn't extend out any further than the existing house is already there. I'm looking to make a single-family home into a duplex for Mr. and Mrs. Lang. They, they presently live in the house also, and we're looking to separate the house so that they have their own living quarters, and we have our living quarters, because we all live in the same house and share the kitchen and living quarters at this time. And due to conflicts of interest at times, there's little squabbles that this will eliminate. But in the house, it's, we're gonna be taking the side that they already reside in, they have their bedrooms on that side. By going out the back, we're gonna move Mrs. Lang's bedroom to the back of the, in the addition, taking that bedroom and making it into a kitchen, because it's right off the bathroom, so I don't have to impact on, as far as, like, on the construction for the water and all those, and have a door on the gable end of that, that side of the house for their entry with a, a little porch on it. I, I made some drawings, I don't know if you all have them.
Um, I believe we do, if you submitted it to Brian, yes.
And then putting a, a second exit out of the addition, so in case of, in emergency, there's always two exits required, or entrance or exits, so that we can, this allows them to, to stay in this home, 'cause then we're going to put them back onto the deed into this house, so that they can reside there. 'Cause they built the original house in nineteen sixty-eight, and they've lived there. So we're not looking at, we're looking at where all of us can live there and coincide on the same piece of property, and without any undue hardships on anybody. And it gives them their privacy, and it gives us our privacy.
And in this case, due to the size of both of your separated houses there, to make it a dual unit, it's not an in-law apartment in this case, they're both gonna be larger than six hundred and fifty square feet.
Correct. Yes, yes. Exactly, yes.
You, in the application, there, there was a comment about how, if we look at, to grant a variance, again, there's those five criteria you probably already heard this evening.
Yes.
Interest, spirit of the ordinance, substantial justice, values of surrounding properties, and hardship. There was a comment, I believe it was in this application, where it said, one, you're surrounded by residential neighborhood.
Yes, and to make note of that, we are going to go to the town to have that piece of property voted to change that to residential come springtime, to remove it from agricultural, because everything surrounding us is, is residential. And if we were residential, we wouldn't need all these special variances.
Yeah.
Is that, do you know whether it's residential one or residential two that you're looking?
It's one.
Is residential one?
Oh, it is?
Yeah, I mean, it, when the property was bought back in the mid-sixties by Mr. and Mrs. Lang, it was attached to a piece of property that was agricultural zoned, so it just stayed as agricultural. And as the neighborhood built, everything became residential, and this one little piece of property in a whole residential neighborhood never got zoned back. So we are going to go forth in, I believe it's March, when the town votes, to have this one, one little piece, this half acre, changed to residential to meet the rest of the surrounding neighborhood.
And for your interest on that, you might wanna make sure you start thinking of that about ahead of time, 'cause there's a few months' process to get something on the ballot, so.
Okay.
You can't just stick it on in March, it's...
Okay.
So you wanna work with the town on that.
Yeah, I've already been talking to Brian about it.
You'll wanna submit something by October, November-ish.
Okay, we'll do, we'll do.
When, when I was looking at table four point three of the dimensional regulations, and you make the claim that if this, if this property was zoned residential, that you wouldn't have any problem...
I would still probably need some variances, but not all these special exceptions that are required for agricultural.
Yeah, when I did the math, and the computer helped me on this, but when you say point four six acres, that turns into like eighteen thousand plus square feet, which is not quite enough...
Okay.
To be automatic. You need, in your case, I think you have, you're on septic, but you have water, city water, non-septic.
Correct, correct.
Which in that case, looks to be twenty, 'cause I thought it was residential two neighborhood.
No, it's R one, he has, if he has either water or sewer, he needs one acre, hundred and fifty feet of frontage, twenty-five front setback, thirty-foot setback, and a fifteen-foot side setback.
Right, and I, the, the rear setback is the only impact on, on this property, on this addition. The front impact doesn't have any, because it's on the backside of the house.
How much frontage do you have?
I believe we have a hundred feet on the frontage on the road.
Was it?
A hundred.
So, okay, so you're...
I believe there's, and there's already two driveways. One, one goes to the garage, and there's one that's tarred on the, on the side of the property. 'Cause along the whole side of this property, where Mr. Bovia resides, is a right-of-way that the power lines come down through, from over the hill and down through. So there's the edge of the property, then there's a right-of-way, then Mr. Bovia's property.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna not continue my line of questioning on that, because I thought it was residential two that it was next to, so.
What's behind your home?
A hill.
What do I know?
It goes up to Mast Road.
Big fence.
That's the property boundary. And then the property, that fence is there because Mr. Bovia's trucks are back there, Bovia Tree. He parks his trucks back there, so the fence is there, so that you don't look at the trucks all day.
So that, um, that road that seems to go, if you're looking at the front of your house, the left-hand side...
The road on the... Yeah, that dirt road, that's just the entry for Mr. Bovia's equipment.
Now, it looks like a road, but it, what is, is it considered a driveway?
It's, it's access, it's the right-of-way.
It's the right-of-way.
It's the right-of-way, and he uses it for access to get his equipment in and out, 'cause he has all that...
Is that your property?
No, ma'am, it's the right-of-way. I don't know who owns that property. I believe it's the state with their power lines.
It's got it going through your property.
I don't know, I, I don't know that one.
I think maybe I can answer that. I believe the old Henry Bridge Road alignment used to go, used to go in that location, and so...
No, no.
No, Henry Bridge Road's further.
Yeah, well, Henry, we come off the corner of Henry Bridge, but the power lines are what, come down through there? And I don't know who owns that, the power company? I mean, who owns power line property?
I didn't see any power lines, I just saw a road, and then it went back to where Vivian saw the fence with...
Yes.
And then I saw wood piled up back there, and that was, it makes sense putting Bovia Tree together with piled up wood.
Yeah, he parks all of his equipment back on that backside.
But you have a...
And that's access in and out.
Next to your property, or going, you have dotted lines that goes to the back of your property, and has a...
Is this on one of my drawings?
No, this is on a...
The town GIS.
The town GIS, there's a little dotted line, which may be the right-of-way, I'm not sure, that goes through your, right by your property, and then follows the line.
That...
Those are just...
Might be the old existing property that still goes up to the property that's owned off Mast Road, comes down over the hill. He owns right up to the back of us. Mr. Bovia rents from him.
It's just these dotted lines.
Yeah, I have, I have no idea what those dotted lines are, are in representation to.
I believe that's just a depiction of where driveways typically go. So that looks like an extension of maybe where a driveway extends into that other property.
It could be, 'cause that's where Mr. Bovia's equipment is.
What is this thing here, this one here?
That's...
That's the driveway, a driveway that goes into this property, I guess.
There's two driveways on this property.
Up to this?
Yeah, that's, I'm not sure the difference between the two lines.
Okay, maybe this is a sore line, or a water line?
I, I know that, well, we have, it might be a water line, because we are on city water, but we have a septic tank in the front lawn.
Okay. Is one of the driveways paved?
Both of them are.
Okay, and this one is dirt?
Dirt on the side, yes, that's the right-of-way.
I think, I think that's the difference. The dotted lines signify dirt driveways, and the paved driveways signify the solid lines.
Okay.
Do any of the dr... Do any of the, I would assume, I don't know, so, will any vehicles be backing out or entering from the dirt side of the property?
One vehicle, which, that driveway's used now, because of, we put the one drive, one vehicle, that would be Mr. and Mrs. Lang's vehicle, would be on that side, but there's always a vehicle in that driveway, even at the present time.
Is that a permitted driveway?
I don't know, I've only been in the picture for two years. It's been there since early nineties. It's, like I say, it's on the side of the right, the right-of-way.
And also I see here, and maybe I'm confused, it says that the lot is only point four six acres in size, and on your assessment card, it says twenty thousand square feet.
That's the same figure.
It is?
It's approximately the same, yes.
An acre's forty thousand?
Forty-three thou, forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet is an acre.
Okay.
I got that information from the town.
Well, you're right, I mean, he's like, he's got to be right.
He's the one that did it.
He's right.
Yeah, he's the one that gave me the figures.
If I see twenty thousand, I thought that was an acre, but no, it's four thousand three hundred and fifty-six, or whatever.
That's right, two hundred by two hundred is an acre, if I'm correct?
Yeah.
Something roughly in that neighborhood.
That's what they consider an acre, yeah.
Yep.
Almost.
Right.
Okay, I get it.
How long have you lived in this house?
I've been there a year and a half. The Langs have been there since nineteen sixty-eight, they're the original owners and builders, and that's why we're looking at letting them be able to stay in what we call their home for the rest of their lives.
You also have a accessory building there, small garage.
It's a little shed out in the back.
Yeah.
It's just a, it's just a tool shed.
There's a garage out in the back, no?
No, there's no garage out back.
There's a pad.
There's a pad there, but no, it's, there's no, it's just a concrete pad, there's no building.
Okay.
If you, if you recently drove by and you saw that pile of wood, it's sitting on the concrete pad before the fence.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, that's sitting on the concrete pad, which would show up as a garage or a building, but it's just a sixteen by twenty concrete pad.
Okay.
And the pool's not there anymore either, on the picture.
You don't have a pool?
No, pool's gone.
It was there.
Yes, it was removed.
I noticed that, you don't have a pool.
Oh eight.
Pool was removed in oh eight.
Okay.
Is the three-season room, still a three-season room?
Yes.
I was just trying to figure out why I saw, but okay.
Any other questions? So I'm going to walk through the different five criteria for the variance. I'm interested in also the special exception, because that's what you're looking at to build, because it's zoned agricultural, that you want to build on a non-conforming lot, which requires a special exception. And there, there's five criteria as well, and there they speak to the specific site that's an appropriate location for such use being consistent with the town's current master plan.
Uh huh.
The size or frequency of the use will not significantly alter the character of the neighborhood. The use will not create a nuisance or hazard to vehicles or pedestrians that cannot be ameliorated. The proposed location is of sufficient size to allow the adequate or appropriate facilities for the proper operation of the use, and the proposed location is of sufficient size to allow for appropriate buffers of this use to adjacent properties. Any comments you would like to make on that aspect of the application, that, regarding those five questions?
No, I don't, I don't.
You provided answers.
Other than, yeah, other than that, we're the only ones that are agricultural in that whole area.
Right.
And we're looking to go to residential.
And you don't propose that by building there, that you're going to be creating a nuisance or altering the character of the neighborhood?
No.
That that lot is appropriate to build on as a house?
Yes.
It's adequate size, and the buffers are necessarily required?
No.
Okay? Any questions?
Just a comment or a thought, I mean, it seems to me, if you've looked at the property, you wouldn't know it was agricultural from looking at it, it's surrounded by residential, and I think if it's a case of simply that it used to be attached to an agricultural property, and over the years, some, the rezoning has never got done, certainly seems, you know, to me to be a reasonable case for an exception, it's never going to go back to agricultural, obviously.
Use anyhow, yeah.
I mean, as far as.
Surrounded by R one the way it is, so.
Correct.
It seems to me a very reasonable case for the exception.
I mean, and if you've driven by the property, you see it's pretty well-maintained, I mean, it's definitely not an eyesore.
Okay. All right, Mr. Minor, any last questions for Mr. Minor?
This is Peggy's.
Okay, thank you. Anyone, and you can return to your seat.
Thank you.
In case another person would like to speak. Anyone here to speak as well in favor of this application? Anyone here abutters or interested parties to speak against it, or to speak in general about this application? Any last comments? All right, any last comments for the applicant before we close the public hearing?
Detached garage.
Vivian, Kathy, you okay?
Yeah, I just saw here that he has a detached garage, but I don't know.
That shouldn't make any difference as far as the application.
The land coverage, huh? Yeah.
Land coverage is not an issue on this one.
Okay.
Yeah, there, I mean, there, the house sits, there's a, there's a garage, but it's attached to the house. That building that y'all looking at out back on that print, there is no building there, that's a sixteen by twenty concrete pad, that's where you saw that lumber.
Right.
That little tiny shed that's at the edge of the dirt driveway, that's just holding tools and yard, not even holding yard, just yard tools and, and storage, it holds the summer furniture and stuff, but there is no detached garage on that property.
Well, they had that as being in nineteen ninety-nine, but it probably turned out to be a shed, like you said, but it had as a detached garage.
Okay, that, yeah, that used to sit back over where that, where that concrete pad was, and they moved it over to the dirt, and they poured the garage pad, they were going to build a building there, but they never did.
Is Ms. Lang wanting to speak?
No, I just was going to say, we had, we had got a building permit for a garage, but we never went ahead with it.
Okay, that's probably what it, because it's, yeah, there's no appraisal on it. Sorry, thank you.
I don't want to answer the questions.
Thanks.
Because we don't want to close the public hearing, and then want to have a question. Normally. I don't want to rush. All right, any last questions with that? I'm going to close the public hearing, entertaining any comments or motions. In this case, they're seeking a special exception and a variance.
The only comment that I, I can make is if I look at it under the R one requirements. He misses the frontage by fifty feet, and he misses the acreage by about half an acre.
And you're looking at Table four point three?
Four point three, right.
R one with either, correct? Either.
With either, right.
Utility.
Yeah, and two dwelling units, two DUs.
All right. So what you're saying is that this was an R one lot, they would still have to come for a variance?
That's right, they, they're missing it, the things they're missing it on.
And that's why he's here for a variance and a special exception.
The acreage and the frontage by fifty feet, not a hundred feet, which he misses on agricultural.
So really, that might just cause problems for him to get rezoned, if he wanted to get rezoned, because it wouldn't meet the criteria of being in the.
It'd still be a non-conforming lot, yeah. He, he could get it approved, but it's still a non-conforming lot, it doesn't really help him, I don't think, unless he's planning to do other activities.
I'll make a motion, we approve the application.
Any seconds or further discussion?
I'll second.
Okay. Vivian has the first, Gail has the second. Any comments? I don't. All those in favor have approved a special exception of the variance has made a motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained. Okay, there we are. Okay, we're on to application number four of six, I think we're doing okay, being eight o'clock. Cobra Construction LLC, applicant owner, is seeking a special exception and variances to remove the existing single-family home and rebuild a single-family home in its place. A special exception is authorized by Section fourteen point seven point three of the zoning ordinance. The lot is non-conforming because it has ninety feet of frontage, whereas Section four point three requires one hundred feet of frontage for a single-family home, and because the lot is only five thousand six hundred and seventy square feet in size, whereas Section four point three requires a minimum of ten thousand?
Square feet, please.
Square feet.
That was my mistake.
That's all right. And because the proposed single-family home will be constructed at point twenty-one feet from the rear lot line, and in another location, twelve feet from the rear lot line, whereas the lot is subject to a thirty-foot rear setback. The locate, the lot is located at sixty-one Large Street, which is map sixteen, lot one sixty-three, in the residential two district. And is someone here to represent the applicant owner?
With music. Good evening.
Good evening, and your name?
Simone Duhamel.
And before you go on, I'm going to get this.
I was wondering.
Regional impact.
You can make the motion. Maybe the motion has no regional impact.
Are you making the motion, Vivian? Okay, is there a second?
I second it.
Kathy seconded it, and Brian recommends that it does not have any discussion. All those in favor to say that it does not have regional impact, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained. Okay. Now, please state your name again, and?
I'm Simone Duhamel from Cobra Construction, and we're looking to remove the current home that's located on that lot, I believe it's a thousand twenty-two square-foot ranch style home, and building a twenty-four by twenty-eight garrison style, garrison style meaning that the second floor actually has a two-foot overhang in the back, but the impact on the lot would be the foundation of twenty-four by twenty-six. And right now, it's, I don't even know what the size is, but it's huge.
The lot, is what you're saying? What is huge, the lot?
No, the home that's on it. It takes up a lot of the land. It's on one side thirty-one feet deep by fourteen, which is an addition, and the main house is twenty-eight by twenty-one. It takes up about eighteen percent of the lot, where the proposed home I'm looking to put on that home is eleven point eight percent, so it would be a much smaller footprint. Also, the home would be more central to the lot, where the current home that sits on is actually very much to the westerly side of the lot, I think it's only like ten feet away from the lot line at this point. And it's in very bad condition.
The current home.
Anybody took a ride by. And it's very campy in its style as well, where most of the homes in that area, people have made a lot of improvements to their homes, they've taken ranch-style homes and made them colonials. There were two new colonials put up, one in two thousand and nine and one in the year two thousand.
Nearby, or next to it, or?
Right next to it. If, if you guys remember, I put this in the packet to give you an idea of the street view, the, all the homes are pretty much colonial style. If, if I could rehab that home, I would, but financially, it's just not feasible at all. The roof is leaking, there is a lot of wood rot, I believe there is termites on the property, it's just in really bad condition. Wouldn't mind taking you guys through it if you want to see it, but it's bad.
It'd be for your life.
Yeah.
Wear a mask.
Do you know what the present setbacks are, front, side, and back, for the existing home?
I believe I have that, yeah. Okay, the westerly corner, we have ten feet.
Is the westerly corner the side setback?
The right side.
The right side, okay.
Yeah, because it has that addition.
The present home has a ten-foot setback.
Yeah, you have ten feet.
Okay, and that, if I'm looking right at the front of the house, you're talking about the right side?
Mm-hmm.
There's a ten-foot setback existing now?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's kind of angled.
Okay.
Easterly angled.
I don't see that on my vision statement, but that's all right. So the front, and the front setback, do you have that?
Yeah, I don't know if you have this, do you have this?
I have this.
Yes.
I have the vision statement from.
The next page.
You should have this as well. And what I did is, you can see the current home, its location's kind of like an L shape, and then the one that I'm looking to build is a perfect square.
Am I looking at the same thing? Yeah, it's confusing in a way.
Let's see, yes, you are. I think it's hard to see, is that she's got color.
Oh, the L shape is the existing, is it?
Yeah.
Is the, okay, I see the line underneath the black, okay, here we go.
Sorry.
That's all right.
It didn't photocopy very well, we might have, should have done it in color.
So, but the, the setback in the front doesn't go to the middle of the house, it goes to the corner that extends closest to the front, doesn't it?
Mm-hmm, because I wanted to get the closest point to the street.
What you're looking at doing now.
Yeah, the perfect square, I'm basically meeting my front and my side setbacks, I'm not meeting my rear setback.
If you, if you look also faintly, there's an area that has some hash marks through it.
Yeah.
It's a triangular-shaped area, that's basically the buildable envelope, that little triangle.
If, if what?
If they met all the setbacks, so.
Okay.
I've reddened it in here on my drawing, so it's easier to.
And is that in the, in addition to the current?
Can you hold your drawing up so I can see it a bit?
This triangle right here is what they would have to meet, if, what they would have to build within, if they were going to meet all the setbacks.
Okay, yeah, we couldn't see that triangle, roll on here.
Yeah, it is a little hard, because we didn't, the photocopy's kind of messed it up a little bit.
And you said the building is angled, so where is the, where is the front lot line, or where is the street line in this drawing?
On the bottom, on the bottom of the drawing.
Where it says large.
So you're setting it at perpendicular to the lot line, rather than being angled the way it is.
Angled, mm-hmm.
It looked to be angled against the back lot line at first.
And because the lot is such, it's such an odd shape, that's why we're running into that issue, instead of it being just a square box, because again, the front and the sides are met, it's just the rear where it angles, you know, basically northwest. The front of the house faces north, if that helps you at all. And you see how the, the back of the lot line kind of comes down, heading northwest?
Mm-hmm.
So by doing that, it's basically cutting off my setback requirements that way, too.
The only thing I noticed about the neighborhood when I went by it was, yes, this is an area that should be repaired and fixed, but I also noticed at the end of the cul-de-sac, I think there was a very large home that apparently must be under foreclosure or something, I don't think anybody was living in that home.
Oh, good, maybe I can buy it.
But that was a very large home in comparison to the rest of the neighborhood.
The neighborhood, yeah.
And I saw, I saw many capes in that neighborhood, and.
This particular home is actually almost an image of the one. This particular home is actually almost an image of the one that's to the right of it.
I saw that.
The one that you're building is an image of the one.
Sixty-five Large Street.
Right.
That's basically looking just like it. And also, if you look to the back of the, of the home, let me just see here.
Is the brand home that's back there?
Fifty-six, fifty-six Fairview. Fifty-six Fairview, again, that's right immediately behind my property. They're all just like that. And then actually, if you're looking to the street view, you see another colonial. That was a ranch last fall, and they just added that second story to make it also a colonial.
Why did you determine to take the front-side setback versus going with the rear setback and not meeting the front setback?
It's a good question, but I think it would just be easier just not to meet one versus having to deal with multiple not meeting.
Well, I think you could meet the rear setback by moving the building forward.
Right, but then I wouldn't meet the front.
That's right, but you don't meet the back now. You, you meet all, you meet, out of the three setbacks now, you meet two of them. And if you were to move the house forward, you would still meet two of them.
Right, yep.
In this, in this case, actually, the proposed house meets three setbacks, the two sides and the front.
I don't think it meets the rear.
Whereas it just, it just doesn't meet the rear.
The rear is the only.
Well, I'm, okay, so.
Right now, it's not meeting one.
If you're talking four side, right, it's not me, it's not meeting one, and it would still not meet one. But the, and the only reason I'm mentioning that is because we have had applicant, applicants come here who, the, the building has been placed in the wrong place on the property, and therefore, they had no backyard. And we had issues with not having enough backyard, so then we ran into variance issues because of not having enough backyard. Whereas the front yard, most people don't sit in their front yard, you know? Most people don't sit, they sit in their backyard.
Current construction, there is no backyard, right now.
But that's the only. I'm just curious what the choice would be. Why would you, why would you make the backyard smaller?
And the front yard not smaller.
Why not make the front yard smaller and not meet the front yard setback, but yet move the house forward so you meet the thirty feet in the back?
One of the things they're doing, and I know I don't wanna speak for them, is they're squaring it to the street.
Yeah.
So they're taking the house, which is slanted to the street, is that correct?
Right.
And they're squaring it, so it's perpendicular to the street, which matches its neighbors.
Exactly. I was just gonna say, if you look at the neighborhood from, from a street point of view, from driving through the neighborhood, if you have all the homes pretty much set back pretty much the same, and then one, all of a sudden, you have one that's like really close to the front, it just, I don't know, it'd throw things off balance, I would imagine.
I'm just curious as to what the rationale was.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't mind putting more backyard there, but I just think, you know.
Do you know?
To move it forward that much, I think would make it look really funny.
Do you know how long that home's been abandoned?
Actually, I rehabbed sixty-six Large Street last fall, and he was foreclosed on at that point, as we were rehabbing, so that was October or November. And then it came on the market a month and a half ago, and I closed on it a month ago.
So was it abandoned?
So maybe a few months.
Yeah.
What, what's your intention with the rest of the property? If you put your square building in here with basically the half of the property where you're taking out the old house, is that going to be landscaped? Is that just gonna be?
Yeah, it's just gonna be a grassy area. You know, I mean, if people wanna use that for play area, that'd certainly be fine, but there is a current driveway there, and I'm intending on leaving a driveway where the current driveway is.
And where's that?
It's basically, do you see?
Towards the right?
It's, it's towards the right, yeah. It's kind of a funny layout, the way they have it at this point, but it is towards the right of the building.
I drove in the driveway, so it's towards, yeah, towards the right.
If you move the house to the front of the lot, you would also take it out of line with the rest of the houses on the street, right?
Exactly, yep.
Any other questions? So just to recap, what you're seeking is that you're seeking variances, and the variances is regarding rear setback. And again, the criteria is that it does not be contrary, contrary to public interest, the spirit of the ordinance is observed, it would do substantial justice, does not diminish surrounding property values, and that there is a hardship. If we literally enforce provisions of this ordinance, which I think you spoke to and was demonstrated when Brian showed the triangle there. And then the other was the special exception, and just like the last application, you're seeking a special exception to zoning ordinance fourteen point seven point three, which says, I need to build on a non-conforming lot. Again, that criteria speaks to, is the size appropriate, a specific set appropriate, doesn't alter the character of the neighborhood, it's not a nuisance or hazards of vehicles or pedestrians, lot is of sufficient size for these facilities, and it's, the lot is of sufficient size to allow for appropriate buffers. And you spoke to all of those things. All right, any last questions?
All right, and how many other homes on this street are on non-conforming lots?
I would have to research that. I mean, I, I know right next to this lot, there's a very long elongated triangular lot, and I would venture to guess that that one could never meet any setbacks.
I would surmise, this is residential two, Pinnardville, almost all of them.
Right, I was just gonna say.
I actually have a diagram in here, and it's, yeah, they're not.
They need to be twice as big. They need to be ten thousand square feet. They're all non-conforming.
Right. Just a, very close to a non-conforming.
That's why anybody who's doing anything in Pinnardville is coming in front of us.
Yeah.
Essentially. Any other questions? Ms. Duhamel, right, how do you?
Duhamel.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else here to speak on behalf of the applicant? Any butters or interested parties that want to speak or speak against this application?
Yes, my name's William Landman.
Sir, please come forward.
My name's William Landman, I'm her rear setback.
Please have a seat. And did you get his name? Okay.
Yeah, I'm Mr. Landman, I'm her rear setback. My concern is the size of the house that she's gonna put on the lot. She mentioned something about a two-foot overhang in the back. She doesn't have any backyard, period. You know, so I, I don't think, I don't think that's a good, no, there are a lot of additions to the, to the street. There's only two non-conforming lots on that street besides that one, one on each side of her. I, I agree with her, if the house was pushed forward, it wouldn't be so bad. I mean, she's almost in my backyard.
Which, which property do you own?
I'm on fifty-six Fairview Street.
Directly behind?
Directly behind her.
And she looks like she has a picture of your home in the application.
Yeah, it's a nice house.
Is it a recently built home as well?
I did an addition in two thousand and one.
Did you have to come for?
I had a cave, yes, I did.
For the zoning board for, what was the purpose that you had to come for the zoning board, was it setbacks?
No, I wanted to do an addition. I was within the existing envelope of the house, and I was told that I still had to come in front of the board.
Okay.
Which I didn't think I had to, because I was staying in the existing envelope.
Okay.
But isn't a garrison, a garrison, isn't a garrison, I don't know if I'm right?
Garrison looks like a barn, that style.
Yeah, but it's, but it, yeah.
It's two stories.
Right, but the second story is always extended out and then built up?
I think it, I think it is, yeah.
And that's why she said that two-foot overhang, I believe.
Is in the back.
Is in the back, and she doesn't have.
Well, that's how the house is built.
Yeah, but she doesn't, she doesn't, she doesn't have the, the land in the back to build on, to begin with.
And they're putting the garrison in the back.
Yeah, it's so small.
The garrison could go in the front.
You know, I mean, the back, the back of the building that she's talking about that.
Around, I mean.
It used to be a garage that was turned into a two-bedroom, that, on the right-hand side of that house. That's the roof that's leaking.
Have you seen this picture that was provided in the application?
I have not.
Uh, was, is the grid pattern where it shows the footprint of the current house and the footprint on top of it of where the proposed house is?
I haven't seen it, no. I, I heard her say it's gonna be, the footprint's gonna be a little smaller, which, you know, I, I'm pleased by, but the two-foot overhang in the back, you know, that's a little concerning to me, whether, now, she doesn't have much land in the back to begin with.
It looks to be.
They're almost kissing me.
It looks like the current home is about, also ten feet or so from the rear property, is that?
Yes, that, that's where the garage used to be, which they turned into two bedrooms.
But it's still about ten feet away?
About ten feet, yeah.
So if this was twelve feet away, which is a little bit further away, that's?
No, I mean, it doesn't make much sense. I like, like she said, I'd like to see the house be bumped up forward in front of the street and give them more of a backyard. Now, I, I have no problem with them tearing the house down. That house needs to come down. That house should have been condemned years ago.
So in, in the balance of things, is it better that it'd be putting a new home up, but you'd like it to be changed a little bit?
I would love to see a new home go there. It's just the way the home is gonna be put on that lot that concerns me. There's no backyard to begin with, and if, you know, they're gonna bump it out a little bit more, I'd rather see the house be pushed forward towards the street with a smaller front yard and a bigger backyard.
How far are you proposing?
Well, that's not of my concern, that would be up to you guys.
So you don't have an opinion on?
Well, I don't know how far you can push a house to the front of the street.
Okay. It would require a variance to be pushed any farther, so.
What's the, what's the rear setback on it?
She's proposing twelve feet.
I mean, what is the?
Thirty.
Thirty. So, and you've got twenty-five feet in the front.
Right.
So he, she can't make it go much further. She don't have five feet from the street, and you can't.
And that's where Brian has that triangle that shows the building, building envelope without having a setback.
Right.
You're, you're gonna be about, you're gonna be interrupting somebody, some setback.
You're gonna be in the street, period. And then if you try to balance it out, you'll have two non-conforming, so you just can't.
What was the, what was your address, sir?
Fifty-six Fairview Street.
Is that a? Is that a two floor, is that two floors?
Yep.
Yes, it's a colonial.
Do you consider it a privacy issue?
Not really, no. My, my concern, like I said, is that house is really close to my property line.
Okay, any other questions?
Would, would, would you think five feet would make a difference to you?
I think five feet makes a, a lot of difference. I, I mean, I'd like to go a little bit more than that, if I could, seven or eight feet forward, and I'll give them more of a big backyard, you know, instead of me seeing the house, period. I can go right to my fence, and I'm, I can almost touch their house. Like I said, it's ten feet on one side. You know, that's, that's concerning to me. I, I'd love to see the house come down, it needs to come down, and you don't want a tour. It's nasty in there.
Any last questions? All right, Mr. Landman, thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to ask Ms. Duhamel one more question, if you could answer. So when we're talking about the garrison-style home, and you identify a twenty-one-foot rear setback as on one corner and twelve feet on one corner, is that the foundation footprint, so that an additional two feet that goes off the back is now, if you were to measure ten feet and nineteen feet?
Sorry, I have to check. The measurement of the twenty-six, which would include the two-foot overhang, is the total square that you see.
Okay.
So, the actual foundation size would come down two feet.
It would be just like fourteen feet and twenty-three feet in that case. It'd be, so what you're showing is the house with the garrison?
With the overhang.
Overhang.
It's the total size, because I figured that would make it easier. I mean, it's, you know, for everyone.
To describe?
Yeah.
For a question just like this?
Yes.
Right? Because you'd hate to have like a ten-foot overhang, and all of a sudden, now you're on the rear property line, you know what I'm saying?
And I just wanna say, I have no problem going forward, you know, if it's a few feet or whatnot, I just don't wanna hurt the integrity of the whole neighborhood and all of a sudden have one house way forward where all the other homes are set way back. So I just wanna make sure that I keep it within balance for the whole neighborhood, because otherwise, the other neighbors will be upset.
Are you able to identify, without having to research, essentially what, how far back your, the, to the right and to the left, the houses are setback from the front property line?
Um, actually, the home immediately on the western side, on the right side of this property, is about ten feet or maybe even less from the fence. I mean, they're like smack.
So you're talking to the back?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, how about from the front, from the street side?
The street side, I believe they're probably meeting their setback at least on the left side of their home. I don't know about the right, because it's a, it's a really skinny triangle shape.
Okay.
So it may not meet it on the right side, but, um.
So it's a little bit slanted against the front property line? Okay, how about the house to the left? Is it, and how far would it be from the front street? Is it approximately the distance with your proposing?
Let me just sneak a peek real quick. Yes, it would be, if you, if you look at this plot right here.
It's got it right there, too.
They're pretty much all, it looks like they're pretty much all meeting about the thirty-foot.
The front setback.
Yeah, the front setback.
Okay.
With the exception of lot sixteen one sixty-six, that looks a little more forward, but the others do.
Ed, which page are you speaking to?
This is on the, uh, copies of the public notice with the numbers down the side.
Oh, okay, yeah.
There's photographs, there's aerial photographs of everything, of all the lots in the neighborhood. You can see that quite a few of the houses are right up against that fence in the back, the ones either side of the property in question.
Okay. So a placement of where she's proposing it is roughly in line with the neighbors to the left and the right?
Yeah, it's in line with the front of those two houses on the left, or three houses on the left in the photograph. The house to the, to the immediate right was the one she was saying was right up against the fence practically, in that way.
Which is not against the butter that spoke here, but?
Oh, right, no. It's the next lot over from him, it looks like.
But it looks to be that the street is not the property line in this case.
Yeah.
From the way they're drawing, is that correct, Brian? It looks to be the property line setback from the street?
Well, that.
Just the picture.
Or that, where it says large street there, that's just a line depicting.
Google representation?
Yeah, from, I think that's from Bing Maps, but.
The white is actually the street.
It's gonna hit a couple of cars in the driveway.
Where the dark line is, that's kind of the edge of the pavement.
Okay, all right, so it's not as far back as it may appear here.
Right.
No, I think the, I think the road actually, if you look where the trees are in the bottom left, is right underneath them and the, ahead of them.
The trees, yeah.
Yeah, I think you can see the road down to the bottom left, and it does, it goes right up there.
Okay, all right. All right, I have no more questions. Anyone else have any more questions?
It'd be, looks like it'll, the right rear corner of the house is the closest to the fence.
Right.
After that, it tapers away and gives them more room against the fence.
So would it be twelve feet from the upper portion of the house?
The upper portion of the house, at the closest point.
But again, I, like I said, I have no issue moving forward, it's perfectly fine with me. We only did it because we tried to stay within that envelope.
Would that require her to come back with another application?
Two non-conformities, two non-conformities.
It would, due to the fact that we would have to notify the public for?
Again.
Yep.
The, the new, the new variance, yeah.
Okay.
We could make a motion that would incorporate like a five-foot leeway?
But then you're creating, you're creating a really more non-conformities on that lot. And if they ever come back again to do something on the side or whatever, they'll have three non-conformities. You know, I mean, you gotta, you gotta give, you know, give it the, the best you can.
This, this is the least of all evens right now.
And as Brian described, you'd have to renotice it if we were to do something like that. You could move it around within five feet, because her, her, she, if she moved it forward five feet, then it becomes...
Front setback.
But, and I, and I look at it from this aspect, is that we have a developer here, um, that's willing to move it forward. And we have, and a abutter here that is asking us to move it forward, who is the person that's directly affected behind it, behind them. And, and that, that's what I'm weighing. That's what I hear.
I think that can come out in the wash of the...
On the other hand, too, it appears to me if you've got a portion of this house that's now, I think, at the closest point of that right rear, you're looking, it's ten feet off the property line. And by doing this new building envelope here that she's outlined, you're coming twelve feet off the property line. So there is some, you know, a small improvement in that setback, even though it is not...
It's a small improvement in what's here, what's being presented. And of, of the percentage of the house that's actually within twelve feet of the property line, it's not a big piece of it. It's a, it's an elongated triangle on the right rear. Otherwise, the majority of its fifteen feet are better. Or half, at least half of its fifteen feet are better.
Mm-hmm.
As you look at the drawing.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Any last questions for the applicant? All right, thank you. Any last comment from the public for or against? All right, any other things before we close the public hearing? With that, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And in this case, I think we're still at Vivian as the voting alternate in this case. So any motions, comments? We have a variance and a special exception.
Well, I just wanna say that that house is an eyesore. And, you know, whether she agrees to move it forward or not, that'll give her only twenty feet frontage, which if you park one car behind the other, it, there's no room, I mean, there'd be almost on, in the street. I, and that's the reason for the twenty-five-foot frontage, is to be able to park comfortably and to be able to back up so many feet out of your driveway onto the street. In that case, in, in seeing that, in saying that, I would make a motion to approve the applicant's request.
Okay. We have a first and a second to approve the applicant's request for a special exception and a variance. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Against or abstain? Five zero zero. All right, thank you. All right, we're gonna, I think we're gonna go back to Len for the remaining two applications for voting alternate. Thank you, Vivian.
You're welcome, and thank you.
It goes two and two.
Yeah, and two. Okay, then, a second, uh, the next application is Nagash Abdo Carter, applicant-owner, is seeking a variance and a special exception to allow a small animal processing facility to process animal products for religious purposes. The proposed processing facility will be located within the barn. The variance is required because this facility would be located on a lot that currently has a single-family home. This would be considered a mixed-use project, whereas Section three point eleven, Table A six of the zoning ordinance does not permit a mixed-use project in the agricultural district. The property is located at eighty-three Joppa Hill Road, which is map two, Lot twenty, in the agricultural district.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that this application has a regional impact.
I'll second it.
Okay, let me add, uh, Brian, uh, Brian is, has additional notes in here that, uh, with this application, I mean, it is a new application, although we've heard a number of this, uh, we've heard some of this application previously, and I believe two thousand nine. Knowing that, has sent a preliminary notification of possible regional impact, both to the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission and the Town of Bedford. And they have both replied. Can you describe the responses, Brian, that we've received?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair. The Town of Bedford basically asked that we table this for, um, for region and, and determine that it's a regional impact to allow them enough time to notify their residents that are in the close by neighboring area. The Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission, um, brought, let's see, I think that was in the other packet today.
I have it in my folder, too.
Yeah. That basically stated several concerns, uh, of which some of them were noise and, um, let's see, noise...
Odor.
Odors and, uh, possible environmental impacts, um, depending on what happens with the remains. So those were kind of generally the, uh...
Okay, so we...
Yes, they came forth from the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission.
We have received, uh, from your initial notification, you've received responses from the Town of Bedford and the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission that they recommend that there's also a regional impact, that they want to, uh, the southern...
Both of them did recommend...
Yeah, the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission wanted to make note that there was a regional impact. And the Town of Bedford, in this case, asked for time to make notification to their residents that are abut in the properties. Because in this case, this applicant's property is, you know, very close to the Town of Bedford, correct?
Uh, yes.
That's correct.
In your, uh, page three oh three of your notes to us, you have a staff review in both of it. You've noted that as well, that it has possible regional impact. And you've made a recommendation that it does have regional impact. And if we vote that it does have regional impact, um, we want to recommend that, that we make notice formally, correct? That's what happens? You make formal notice to these?
That's right.
That we would then hear this application the next meeting?
Correct.
In July?
Correct.
Is that appropriate?
We cannot open the public hearing until...
I have a question.
...July, until all the abutters are, are properly notified.
I have a question to that, though. Why wasn't this applicant told ahead of time before coming here?
What's that?
That he wasn't going to be heard. I mean, he had given the information...
No, no, no. We, we have to...
No, no, I'm just asking why he wasn't...
Um, go ahead.
We haven't determined that it does have regional impact yet. Right now, the, the letters were sent out on supposition because last time we did determine that it was. We have to determine if it does, if it does in fact, making it a determination of the board.
We could have determined that, and we still could, that the notice that has been provided, the initial, is sufficient. Um, and that, with that question, Brian, when did you make notice to the Town of Bedford and the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission?
At the same time that notification letters were required to go out for, um, our abutter notification.
What, approximately what day of the month?
Our, our notification requirements are seven clear days prior to the meeting. And so they were done approximately a week and a half ago.
Okay, so nowhere near thirty days notice, okay. Okay. Any other comment by the board? So we have a first by Kathy, a second by Ed, that this does have regional impact? Any other things?
No, that's fine. I'm, I'm all set with it.
I would like to just make note that we did, um, mention to Mr. Abdo Carter that, um, there was a possibility that it could be determined as a regional impact. And he was well aware of that and said that he would like to take his chances and come forward, forward to the board tonight.
Yeah, you'd hate to have it heard, and he's not here to have us, have it be heard, yeah.
I was concerned, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Any last comment?
I just wanna make a comment that, that the last time this was in front of the board, that we, I believe I was chairman at that time, and we, we were quite informative as to how the regional impact process works in the Town of Goff, Goffstown. So I do feel that, um, historically, the applicant is aware of how the process goes with the regional impact.
Okay. Great, great.
I just wanted to say, unfortunately, I didn't get a chance to get up there. That's the one property I didn't go look at.
Okay. All right, so in this case, Len is the voting, voting alternate for the five-person board. We have a motion that this application does have regional impact. We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstained? Okay. Ms. Abdo Carter, what we're gonna do is we're gonna make sure we formally send that notification out that this, that we've made a determination this has regional impact, um, automatically goes to the next meeting? Or do we make a determination that it goes to the next meeting?
You'll have to determine which meeting to, to continue it to.
I'd say, we, I would like to suggest and put on the table that we, we hear at next meeting. And if I understand, when we have anything that is continued, they're usually scheduled first on the agenda.
Right.
Is that a motion?
If, if you'd like, I would like to make a motion...
Sure, let's take that as a motion.
Yes, make it all in a motion. I make a motion that, um, we continue this, um, applicant's hearing, uh, public hearing at our July meeting.
I'll second.
Can we be specific to the July fifth?
July fifth.
July, July fifth?
Yes.
Forces on a Monday.
Can I make a comment?
No, no, he can't, he can't.
Is it a scheduling issue?
No, it's not a scheduling issue. It's the same thing that we have gone through three years ago.
Now, if it's not a scheduling issue, we'll hear you next meeting.
Scheduling also, I have life and I have bills to pay, I have to work. I'm not interested in going and running around for the next three years.
I understand, Mr. Abdo Carter.
Yes, sir.
Um, okay, and I think we'd, oh, so you had a motion that to be at the July fifth meeting?
Correct.
First on the...
First on the agenda, has...
Ed seconded it?
Not gonna be, yeah.
Any, all right, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstained? Okay, so this application will be heard on the fifth of July. Um, I think the towns of, the Town of Bedford has received sufficient notice to, uh, to start their, you know, if they're worried about thirty days and all that, um...
We'll, we'll still be required to send them formal notice by, um, certified mail, make sure that, you know, it was properly received.
Right.
But that's kind of a technicality at this point.
Right. I understand.
Question for Brian, or does this allow enough time for all the certified notifications that are required?
To go to the abutters?
Have we got the...
Well, we've already voted.
Yeah.
Yep.
So...
Yeah, you have enough time.
Plenty of time.
Do we have time to notify Bedford and for them to notify their abutters?
We, no, we have, we have to notify the Bedford abutters. We notify them, we, Bedford doesn't notify us.
No, we do not. No, we do not.
Bedford notify?
We do not notify Bedford abutters. We will notify the Town of Bedford formally and the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission formally.
Right.
And they will notify their, their residents or...
And they've already heard, they've got the, the gears going, and I don't wanna push this application to them.
Right.
I mean, that, I understand the applicant's request. Okay, so, Abdo Carter, thank you. July fifth.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and Len stills the voting alternate on our last application of the evening, which we have is Joel and... Joel.
Joel.
Bergeron and Suzanne Blanchett. Applicants, owners, are seeking variances to allow a proposed lot line adjustment on two non-conforming lots. The proposed lot line adjustment will not meet the dimensional regulation in Section four point three or the accessory building setbacks in Section five point one. Currently, map forty-three Lot five has a single, oops, has a single-family home that encroaches onto the abutting map forty-three Lot four. The variance is required because proposed lot line adjustment will adjust the lines between the two properties, making the single-family home on Lot five approximately three feet and three point two feet from the side setback, whereas Section four point three requires a fifteen-foot. And the detached garage on Lot four will be approximately one point six feet and two point five feet from the side setbacks, whereas Section four point three requires ten feet. The proposed, excuse me, the properties are located at thirty-eight Riverview Park Road, map forty-three Lot four, and thirty-six Riverview Park Road, map forty-three Lot five, in the residential two district. And before we hear from the applicant, we may need to make a determination on regional impact. Anyone have a comment or any...
I have a motion that there's no regional impact.
Second.
We have a first and a second, that this does not have regional impact. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstained? So, sir, it looks like you're speaking. Your name?
My name is Don DuVell for the applicants. I think you've stated a whole, uh, issue here. We started out staking out a property line. And in part of our survey, we found that the abutting house was over the property line. So what we're trying to do is have a lot line adjustment such that both dwellings are on their own lot.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we've addressed your five criteria. The hardship being, uh, without the lot line adjustment, it's gonna end up always being a cloud on both properties.
That garden would be an issue, I tell you. I said the garden would be an issue.
Are you planning on following those railroad ties? Is that the lot line you plan on taking? Is that on this...
Uh, essentially, yes. I think what we're trying to do is, just a little bit of history. In, in the sixties, around there, they did a, it looks like they did a subdivision around existing dwellings. And at the time that this survey was done originally, the house on, uh, forty-three dash five was only thirty feet long. Talking to the abutter evidently, when her parents bought it, even though the house was only about thirty feet long, there was still some type of foundation, an additional fourteen feet. And at sometime between sixty and eighty-eight, the house was added on to. And in that portion, that's the portion that went over the lot line.
Okay. At this point right now, both lots are non-conformous.
Exactly.
Side guys.
Right. And at this point, the house on forty-three dash five and part of their rear patio would be on Mr. Bergeron's land. So we're trying to adjust the lot lines and basically wiggle in between the garage and the patio, so each lot's improvements will be on their own property.
That's where that little fence is.
Correct.
It seems to be a mutually agreed-upon position.
Uh, yes. Originally, just for interest, they tried to, uh, my client tried to bump the property out a little more to pick up more square footage, uh, but they finally come to a meeting of the minds. The reason he was, uh, for your information, that he was trying to bump it out a little more was to, see, he's losing about four thou, four hundred square feet within the Shoreland Protection Act. We tried to, uh, put a wedge or a piece in behind it, but we were advised, A, that the client, uh, the abutter didn't wanna go along with it, and we're advised by planning staff that, uh, they didn't think the planning board would go. Or, I'm not sure if it's planning staff or the building inspector.
No, not the building inspector.
Co, was it Scott?
Just, just, the lot, just the lot planning in general was not the greatest.
Right. So we've come up with this configuration that I think, uh, although it's not the greatest for my client, I think everybody's, uh, both, uh, both owners are behind me. They can speak for themselves, but I think we've come to an agreement that this is the best we can come up with.
And you're the, uh, your client is of Lot forty-three point four?
Dash four, correct. Joel Bergeron.
So, um, I, I, I don't know the lots, but four and five. I know thirty-six and thirty-eight. So thirty-six will have this lot line, but in the back of thirty-eight, they will have more property?
Uh, Romy, I, I don't follow your questioning.
I mean, they'll be given, you have a, the lot... I mean, they'll be given, you have a, the lot-line here.
Correct.
And this is the new lot-line.
Correct.
So you're giving them a little bit more rear property.
Yes, that's correct.
And taking a little bit more from the front. Why didn't I see the patio? Did you see the patio? Where do you want?
I'm, I'm, so this, you, you gave them more in the parcel, you gave them more in the back?
Right.
No, no.
You gave them more property in the...
For compensating.
For compensating for this property up here.
Right.
Their, forty, he's, his client is parcel forty-three four, which is the top piece.
Right.
So the dashed line is the old lot-line.
Right, right, no, I'm looking at, at the, at the, what they're giving, what they're, what they're exchanging to each other.
The new line's giving them a little bit more property.
Giving forty-three point, forty-three dash four more property in the back.
Correct.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I don't have the numbers.
I look at giving as giving away.
Oh, no. No, because they, no, because then...
It's a abutter.
It's a abutter.
Right, I understand.
Well, closer, I guess.
And in the front half, they're, that's where they're giving away some.
And you got to yes with both of them.
And the planning staff seem this would be the best way to do it, more straight lines involved?
I guess, from what you're saying.
Yeah, the, the original plan that they had sort of took a jog out of the backyard of this one, and it just was, you know, in talking to the, the abutter, they weren't very happy with it. And pretty much, you know, I, I told them, you know, go and work out your lot-lines together, but to me, it looks like straight lines would seem a lot easier and make a lot, everybody a lot more happy. And it did, so, I mean, that was...
Easier to enforce, right? Easier to mark, easier to enforce.
The bottom line is, you're both the property owners. Are you happy with this?
Different line.
No, we don't have to ask what happy, that's not part of our job.
We don't have any other option, we just wanna put this to bed, so...
Well, there's another option, you can move the house.
Reluctantly, but there's no other choice here, so...
Yeah, the problem, the problem is that when the lot-lines were first set up, they went around the buildings because all that property was owned by one person, and they finally subdivided it. And by that time, the houses had already been there fifty or more years.
Right.
So they, they're all kind of around like that. And then since then, there's been fires, things that we built, you know, the foundation was there and we got it, but we built on the foundation, and now things are not necessarily the way they were set up when they first went around everything.
And ma'am, your name is?
Suzanne Blanchett.
And you're the owner of?
Lot five.
Lot five, and sir, your name is?
Joel Bergeron.
And you're the owner of?
Forty-three four.
Forty-three four, okay. Well, you sit next to each other, so it's all good, right?
We gotta live next to each other, like, oh, we can sit next to each other.
And you're that close?
We're that close, we have to kinda get along.
Of course.
Good, good, alright. Any other questions?
There was a, there was a, there was a subdivision from all this, I know who owned the property.
It was owned by Dow Estates, the Lemreizes, and in nineteen seventy-nine, it was subdivided. So they actually went around all the various properties. My parents bought it right at that same, right around that same time.
I think in history, they were all camp lots.
They were all camp lots.
Yeah.
And then they, like I says, they created lines best they could around what was there.
And in this case, this will get the nice, everything gets recorded clean title for everybody, and everything is good.
I mean, it's from a front property, and I'm sure you guys have...
So when you're on your patio, you can't say, "Get off of my property"?
Right.
If you move a house, I think you need to choose a different job.
You can, you can have that corner house there and stay there. That's too bad, I, I can't believe they did a subdivision that's not even conforming.
Again, when they did the subdivision, the house on four wasn't that big.
It was a camp, it was a camp.
Right, and it was fourteen feet shorter than when it is presently. So when they created the lines, they went around the thirty-foot house, and somehow the house changed from thirty to forty-one.
Yeah, and that was all prior to...
Alright, any last questions? Okay, Mr. Duval, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, any, I should ask, there's not many people left in the audience. Anyone else here speaking on behalf of the application who hasn't already spoken? Anyone here to speak against the application or any interested parties that wants to be heard? Okay, any last questions for the applicant here? Okay, so they're seeking variance to change the lot-line. And they spoke to the criteria here. Alright, with that, we're gonna close the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Duval, Mr. Bergeron, and Ms. Blanchett. And entertain motions or...
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion to approve the applicant's variance? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed or abstain? Done.
Thank you very much.